Okay, I've got six o'clock. We all stand and pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
All right, good evening, folks. This is the June twenty ninth meeting of the Town of Canada, they were planning board. Let me introduce you to the folks we have here and one who is not here. Kimberly is our remote access facilitator at my far right. John Rubatello is our recording secretary. Coming down the dais, it's Mark Neil, excuse me, Mark. Playing board member. And we have Bob McCource, vice chairperson, Chuck Euler, chairperson. Sarah Boncheck, our town planner and sitting in tonight Greg LeTelling from our MRB group, our town engineer. And remotely, we have with us Scott Neal, another planning board member. And I think joining us later will be our fifth playing board member, Amanda Van Lake. Okay, I think most of the people here have are somewhat familiar with our procedures. Basically, the planning board goes through the agenda is published. And when we get to a particular item on the agenda, we'll ask the applicant to make a presentation. Followed to be followed by the board asking questions or any comments they may have on the application. We will then, I will hopefully go out to the public and ask for any comments, questions from the public. We'll reconvene then the playing board and we'll deliberate on the application and we'll act on the application. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Speak loudly and clearly so folks at virtual land who is Scott can hear and and make your presentation. Okay, first item on the agenda is well, let me point out our emergency exits left and right. For any reason, this emergency occur, please duly note where they're located and proceed accordingly. I will now go to privilege of the floor, ask anyone in the audience who is here to address the board on an issue that is not on the agenda. Now's the time to do so. Yeah, I assume that everyone's here for agenda items, so let's move straight ahead. We do have a couple of public hearings this evening, new hearings. The hearing were legally published in the Daily Messenger on June twenty third. And so they have been advertised. And if there's no other concerns, we'll move right into the agenda. First being a public hearing for Brian and Nancy. Nancy Allen McCarthy, one twenty-six Washington Street, Canada, they were New York, owners of property at sixty-one thirty-five Duckway Road. Requesting a single-stage subdivision consisting of sixty-three point five three acres to be subdivided into one lot being three point three five acres. The remaining lot being sixty point one four nine acres. And I will open the public hearing and ask someone who is representing the McCarthys to let us know what you're what you're doing.
Sure.
Right to the podium, sir.
Good evening, Brian McCarthy, my wife Nancy is not available to join us today.
Okay.
So my myself. Yes, you know, I own the property, we've owned the property since two thousand and one. Prior to that, we had a land we saw in nineteen ninety-six. We've come to a point where we have made a decision that would not, we have rented the home plot. The plot that we're looking to subdivide for period of home use. Our window owner interested in renting. And our family's going, we're not going to use the residence for home use. So our intent is to subdivide. Our intent is to keep the other remaining six acres for home use. My first time doing this, if you need additional details, please.
I think that pretty well sums up, Mr. McCarthy, I appreciate it. We'll open it up to questions from the board.
You have an intended purpose for your first major.
Currently, the farmland is used, we would intend to use. Is a barn or a property that we use for personal use, we intend to do that. And as a woodlot that we use for our own personal use.
I have one question, why? Why the irregular shape of the lots? I mean, rather than just squaring it off, you sort of you know, to the, I guess, the south, you come across and then you do a jag to the to the south to meet the side lot line, is there a reason for that? Do you explain it to that line? Yep.
Yeah, so we come down, the lot has a natural geography to it. And there's existing laneways studying to the property where permits me and my wife. There's a lane way here, we'd like to maintain access from our barn. Always spots to get up behind heel. Where if we square this off here, there's some additional work that would have to be done, I was not looking to invest that. And also the property on this corner, and when you look at the property, the way it slopes out. We really chose the lot lines to come into what would be usable for us. And then it starts to go up on a pretty steep grade. And it's, it almost has a natural geography to it, if you will.
How about out at the road too, you also have a chicken's harpy line. We're sort of rather than going straight out to the road. Well, north, south, north standpoint, it sort of kicks to the west.
If you look at the the knoll on that road, it just sort of kicks straight out and I will coming out of this field with the tractor. I have very limited visibility, plus I'm down Duckway Road, despite running from out here. So this gives me much better visibility.
So there's a driveway located on the bigger lot. It's right there.
Existing driveway.
Uh, the, you have a, you have an ag driveway for your barn, for your barn, yeah. Okay, I thought you're, I thought you use, you were saying something about site distance was an issue up there.
So if I'm, when I'm mowing.
Yeah.
The perimeter of the field. If I'm mowing this way and I want to come out on the road, well, we get back.
Oh, okay.
I have very limited visibility. Exit this field onto Duckway Road, get on the soft side to try to.
Okay, it's mowing, okay, I thought it was your access, okay. Any other questions, board members?
No.
There was a question, check on inspection of the wastewater system.
Yeah, from Chris Jensen.
Is that addressed?
No, I haven't. That was previously brought to my attention was he asked to have this sight point updated to show the location of the driveway, which I don't use.
But I think what our CEO was saying that we should have an inspection of the onsite system. And I'm not sure if it's, is it covering the resolution or is it just covered in Chris, Chris Jensen's comments have to be addressed?
Well, that would be also one of those cells.
Well, I know he had, yeah, once the transfer title takes place, for sure, then you have to do it. And I, yeah, there's a county court enforcement office comments to be addressed to their satisfaction, prioritizing. So Mark, I guess that would require to be done before the signing. Uh, just looking at some third-party reviews. The county playing board did not comment on this application. The ag committee did review it and they found no loss of valuable farmland. Be not good, which is fine. Any NRI features that they're concerned, Sean?
No.
On this, okay.
For future check, it shows twenty percent northern hardwood, just under five percent steep slope and two percent.
Yeah.
Right, at this point, since this being.
I know it doesn't affect anything now, but I think it's sometimes good to get get them familiar with putting those kind of features on plans as we go, but it's again, it's not an issue for what Mr. McCarthy has proposed.
What the chairman referring to, just so you know, is if you decide to do something with this block different later. The the natural resource inventory that's on that property. And currently it shows as being twenty-eight percent northern hardwoods. About five percent steep slope to two percent wetland. The the intent would be to try to serve as much of that as possible if development happens, so.
So that would put your intent is to keep it as. Okay. Anything else? Was anybody in the audience like to address the board on this particular application? Not well, close the hearing and move forward. This is an unlisted action under seeker. So why, why don't we do them separately? I feel more comfortable doing unlisted actions with separate motions. So someone would give me a motion regarding the seeker, I appreciate.
I'll make the motion for seek resolution, unlisted action at six one three five Duckway Road in RR three rural residential zone for single-stage subdivision.
I'll second.
Give a motion, a second. You think Greg, the latest revision of the plan that I saw was five eighteen twenty-two. And I think both these resolutions state April nineteenth. Just make sure we got the, this plan. Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Five eighteen.
Five eighteen, yeah, revised.
Revised, show the wow.
Uh, one favor?
Hi.
I. Okay, let's move on to the subdivision itself.
Again, I'll make that for approval for a single-stage subdivision, flat approval for CPN two two zero three four six one three five Duckway Road. For approval for the subdivision. I'll second it.
What, Mark?
That's with three conditions?
Yes.
You have three. Okay, the motion and a second. Any other thing I have regarding this application is on the findings, Greg. Number seven says the zoning board of appeals granted a requested area variance at the June twenty first meeting. They did not adjudicate it, they didn't either. So we can just take that out. Okay, motion, second, one favor?
Hi.
Right. Posted. Okay, Mr. McCarthy, thanks for coming and seeing me. Good luck.
Do you require any further action?
To see me? No.
You can be excused.
Okay, moving on, our next hearing is Vennett C. Associates fifty-one twenty Laurel Lane. Laura Lane, Canada, they're representing three guys, properties, not deals with five guys. Fifty-two seventy-five. Owner property of fifty-two seventy-five Parish Street Extension, testing a single-stage subdivision review for the subdivision of twenty-one point nine one seven acres to create two lots, one of nineteen point nine three two acres, the other being one point nine eight five acres. I will open the hearing at this point. I will note that the applicant was required to get a variance from the ZBA last week and they did so for a sixty-six point five side yard variance.
Yeah, it was for a, a structure housing courses. So I had to be a hundred feet from the property line. They were, we were able to obtain that variance last week, so. It's pretty straightforward, it's a two-lot subdivision. The reason driving the lot on the house goes for financial purposes for refi. And then also with the size and location in the property line. So we kind of wanted to make sure that that was all on one piece.
And the ownership, ownership stays the same.
Ownership staying the same, all operating procedures exactly the same, it's just a financial move for the owners.
Okay. Any board comments? Uh, the thing was Chris Jensen said something about two hundred foot.
There's a difference between a hundred and the two hundred, two hundred is.
Hundred feet.
Yeah, that's for pigs, not horses.
Okay, and then the.
Chickens and pigs are two hundred horses and.
I think the CBA and its.
Camels are something crazy.
The CBA and its approval conditioned it upon the remaining horses, so that the hundred foot.
Yeah, that's what he, there is no change in that, that's an equine center.
Well, I think their concern was somebody in the future.
Pigs are in the, I mean, if they were to change the use, then they'd have to get a use variance, you're redo the variance.
Or change the animal.
I mean, it's horses, I don't know if there's anything else, I'm not sure what a camel is.
All right, well, that's the difference, I need it.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the ZBA covered it in their, in their issue.
Yeah, I believe there were some goats or something in the paddock at the back of those. Somewhere else, because we're under the five acres. I think Chris mentioned that.
Yeah, that's where I picked up the two hundred feet. Okay, again, the county playing board did not comment on this application. MRB did have a couple of issues and I think that's covered in your, in the resolution as far as addressing those. ECB had no concerns. Um, subject easements. They're all existed, is there an easement per se for something? I'm not sure if it's.
It's the only subject that's.
That's two separate, unless there might be a line that, I believe there might be a line that goes to the barn.
Probably, I'm sure they have bathrooms in there.
Do we need to do that without the changing ownership or could that be, if there was? Well.
Would you like to see proposals?
I think being it's two separate lots, I think you'd want to make sure the easement for lot one. For lot, yeah, for lot one, of course, lot two.
Yeah, we could create like a septic easement that would cover the absorption field, any lines over there.
I don't know.
That'd be, yeah, every condition is. Anything else?
The findings, number seven, there was just one variant.
And it says zoning.
Granted, the requested variance, as I just said, that it should be variance.
Okay.
Uh, no NRI features. Again, this similar to the last application, it's not something that's a concern at this point, but uh, I guess we should get people comfortable in putting NRI features on any plan if it's.
I'm not sure if there were one, it's just a giant field right now.
Maybe there's not on this one.
On court report.
Did you check, Mark? I did, okay. All right. Let's go, unlisted, excuse me, anybody in the audience? On this application? If not, I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to deliberation on the seeker unlisted action. Someone want to give me a motion?
I'll make the motion that the planning board has made a determination of non-significance on application CPN twenty-two dash zero three six.
Second, second, sure, we all looked at part one and reviewed the answers, those questions and we agreed with them, at least I did. Answer correctly. Okay, no further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
And you'll have that for me to sign and let's take care of subdivision. And I have a motion on the subdivision.
Will we also make that motion to accept the single-stage subdivision flat approval? Resolution CPN two two dash zero three three, three six, F five two seven five Parish Street Extension. Uh, with the five conditions, the fifth one being the septic.
Okay, I, I would ask the sixth, the added that the uh, plan reflect that the variance was received from the ZBA six twenty-one variance.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Through the subdivision with six conditions. Any further discussion?
Do we need to add the conditions from this one?
I think the order sells.
Has that?
Has it in it? Yeah. Part of any building for repeat issued, but it goes with the land, so it will be part of it. Okay, all favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posted. Okay. Hey, if the when you didn't leave, that's okay. All right, our third hearing is once again, Vennett C. Associates representing German Brothers Industrial Park LLC, thirty-nine, who seven, county of thirty-nine or seven, county room sixteen, owner of property at county room thirty, North Street. Requesting a single-stage subdivision of thirty-six point nine two seven acres to create two lots, one being twenty-four point nine two seven and the other lot being twelve acres. Okay. What's happening now?
So the owners are looking to just subdivide into two lots, just for typical two-lot subdivision. I believe that they have plans to sell off lot two. And then if, I believe that the current owners of German Brothers are looking to buy it and create a maintenance facility out there.
Yes.
Get a lot of stuff off the, off the lake and off of Westlake Road and start doing more maintenance out there and not clogging the congestion of Westlake Road.
That's the German Brothers' original plan for that lot.
Yeah.
Way back.
Yeah, way back, yeah.
Big bars and everything, I think, I don't think there's going to be storage out there. I think it's going to be a maintenance facility, but that's up to them if they want.
Right.
Right now, it's just two lot subdivision.
So the storage parts, the storage facility will be a separate application.
Yeah, if, if it's maintenance, if it's storage or just maintenance, it'll be a separate planning board application that will have to come in. I know there were a couple of easement things that you guys.
Yeah.
Went through, I don't know if Rick and Pete reached out to you guys about that at all.
They haven't, I mean, Greg's weren't on it, we haven't heard from them.
We've, we've prepared the easements.
They're prepared.
I think we're going to make them condition.
Yeah, I was going to say we'll add them as condition five, because it's going to enlist.
Have you had conversations about this, them? Because I talked to Rick about it, asking if they've talked to the town, agreed to those and.
What did they say?
He said that they didn't hear about it, maybe know about it, so they wanted to have a little further conversation, so. This condition is a condition that they can have that conversation with.
It'll be a condition.
With the town.
Right.
With the development office.
One question, are there, is it one easement or two easements?
It's two.
Two.
Two, I thought so.
There are two trailers, one in the front room.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure we got both of them.
Yes.
Is the board familiar what we're talking about? Okay.
Do you, we have the easement map.
Yeah, we have both of them, I, I did put them on there because I was talking to the owner. It's one of those things.
Yeah. There it goes, yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
So that's the one on the front, and there's one there on the rear.
Or that one, yeah, there's another one back.
We have both, we have all the information to the two maps. I believe I added the one in fact, just.
You did, you did.
What's happening with that? There's, there's easement that cuts the middle of the west.
Oh, that drainage.
So that's going to be a drainage, the, the German Brothers, lot one, if you go back to it.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. This piece was on the town parcel, which is actually the berm for the water quality pond we built for the sucker brook, so the trail was always intended to go on that berm, which I think the trail is actually on the berm now.
Right.
For, for a portion of it, and then this is basically us trying to connect the Auburn Trail to Outhouse Park and then also uh, we have to get north of the airport, so we had other plans to cross the airport on the airport property, but the FAA said no. So we're coming up with alternate ideas and those require easements.
Right, just want to see it, I.
Yeah, right.
So the reason for the easement was this is kind of a low area, natural low area, they want to make sure if they're, if they do any development here, they have some water. And we come down to kind of follow that berm.
Right.
That berm was kind of cut off this water, so it naturally is going to come through here. They just wanted to keep that open if there was any.
Right.
Future development there that we had overflow access. Because obviously they'll have, they have other things that they want to talk to town about the development as far as water quality.
So there's nothing that would, that would isolate the north part of that lot? Doesn't just so that easement doesn't interfere?
Well, it could be a culvert, it could be anything, it doesn't really interfere with it, it would be something we have to work around, that the owners have to work around. They, they have talked to the um, future owners of lot two, and they believe that they don't really have a problem though. There's quite a bit of room there to, to develop and do what they want to do, without going too far with that, because it does go down and then up. It's kind of wet back there.
Wasn't, wasn't that basin size to allow for the control of the stormwater off of lot one? I, I think that is.
In part, in part, in part, so I think we were able to handle quantity, not quality.
Right, but it's hard to do quality without doing enough.
Quality, yeah.
Kind of one insane, you know, it's two different things, but it's hard to do.
Infiltration swells. So you'd need an easement.
That would.
Way of conveying that water to the, the basin of the townville.
It would be more of where their quality would be an overflow. And then if, if the system, if something came, a large event came, it would overflow to that area.
It really just depends on what your, what your layout looks like and how much impermeability you're really talking about, so.
And there used to be a, a fiber optic that went cut through the property, that's, that has since been moved to poles.
Is that what Chris Jensen said?
Yeah, there was a, it was an easement, there was a line that was just went across here. Fiber optic company decided that it was easier to just run it on the lines. Which should be, I believe it's still in the ground.
Do we know the intended purposes of lot one and two?
There is no purpose for lot one.
Not yet.
As of right now, and lot two is you know, if they do it, they do it, if they don't, you know. We're just being industrialized and sort of, I don't really want to go to say it's specifically for something.
Yeah, well, it's just for sale.
It's for sale, yeah, but it's, I mean, they're both for sale, so.
Oh, I thought you said the boat story.
That is the plan.
Oh, that's.
It's not set, so, yeah, there's no like designer in that, so.
Right.
You know, just like the German Brothers, the other one, it kind of fell through the business. I don't know why.
And the, does German Brothers still own the, the property?
They own the property, Rick and Pete are owners, they're subdividing, they're selling it to Peter.
Pete, the other Pete.
Right, so.
Brew, Peter Brew.
Yeah.
Brew, okay, I do. I'm not sure how. Okay. So that's.
So, and that would be, that's in, that is potentially, I guess, the reason I'm asking is we had joined directly to the IDA property, which is tied to the airport. And I didn't know if there were any concerns related to any, any part of the design that is limited because of air traffic, anything was open.
There is, I know.
They will be involved in the approval process, they'll be part of the you know, you'll have height restrictions and things of that nature.
Yeah, there is a restricted area off the end of the airport that extends on those.
Safety zone area.
They'll see it and they'll put in their, their opinions on the matter of what people there and how.
But it doesn't impact the subdivision, it's only if there's a development.
Pretty much you're not allowed to do a pot.
Yes, they don't like her.
They don't want these, you guys, they have hours.
You've got. You've got the potential driveway access mark.
Yeah, there's an.
Yeah. Is it shown?
Now, there's.
Is the driveway.
Driveway cut, there's no cut on lot one. We could add one, but it would just be kind of somewhere random.
Well, I think each lot has to have the, be able to show that there can be driveway with adequate site distance.
So we have the site distance here and site. The one is an existing drive, the other one's just kind of. In about, in the best location.
Right. Is, Craig, is that drainage easement described adequately on the plan or do we need a little more detail list?
Well, you're gonna have a.
We'll have to file with barriers and barriers and distances and.
So different than the.
Two.
Do you want that as another condition?
Uh, it might have been covered in MRB. I'm not sure.
Well.
Uh.
We could put all the easements in.
Yeah, just show this, yeah, detailed description of the drainage. Show on the point. Uh. Gas line, you got the gas line easements, the yellow, right?
Mm-hmm. I believe that's an abandoned line as well. They retained easements, but they don't use it.
So the drain.
To actually show the uh the width of the easement.
I'll look into it, but I don't think that there is.
Okay.
I believe we have that issue.
Other board members' questions? Uh, the county planning board did not comment on this application either. We talked about Chris Jensen's question about the underground cable in the parcel. Anthony answered that. MRB, any issues, Greg, that you have that can't be changed in the, you know, after the fact. They're wrong, so. Uh, we sent the application to the city candidate. We got no comments back from them. Uh, no comments from the committee. Uh, I don't think the ECB reviewed it, so.
They did not.
No comments from them. And that's all the outside agencies that looked at it and. Commented, so if uh. Everyone's comfortable, can move on with the uh. Resolutions, excuse me, let me close the hearing. Assuming no one from the audience wants to speak regarding this application. If not, I will close the hearing and we'll move on to taking action on the seeker. Once again, unlisted action because subdivision. Uh, someone wanna give me a motion? I'll make the motion. That uh seek resolution, unlisted action. Uh. Approval for single-stage subdivision approval, CPN two-two dash zero three-seven at zero zero zero, March Street. Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, I got a motion to second. Everyone looked at part one. Happy with the uh the answers provided and for two, the answers provided by Lance in response to part one. Uh, okay, for the discussion, now, all favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, I will now entertain motion for the subdivision.
I'll make the motion and I believe we have what, five conditions? Cause we added the trail easements.
We have six. We added a, yeah, the drainage easement.
Okay, I make the motion that we approve with the following six conditions for application CPN twenty-two oh three-seven, German Brothers.
I'll second. Okay, and the conditions five and six are one having to do with the trail, this will be uh granted to the town and filed prior to planning board signature. Six is drainage, it will be filed prior to planning board. Thank you. Everybody happy?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please. Okay, very good. All right, move right along.
Us.
Yeah. Think we're gonna take a half hour break.
Right.
I wouldn't do that to you. Alrighty. Patiently, we we now move on to new site plans. Specifically McCormick Engineering, PC representing applicant Brian Cal- Califolium, Califium. Uh, AKA Diversified Equipment. Uh LLC and Simon's Rockwell. For an address down in Elmira, they own property at nineteen forty-seven State Route three thirty-two. Requesting a single-stage site planner review for construction of a lawn and garden equipment shop. And Mr. Farm.
Um yes, can we go to the next, the next page on that?
Sure.
I think it's a little easier to talk about the the project when we're looking at the overall site plan. Uh, the plan is to develop uh two buildings out there. One is fifty by a hundred and sixteen feet. That would actually be the office and the shop area. It would have a covered uh entry porch. Uh, the other building is forty by one hundred feet. That's for equipment storage, since they're not allowed to have materials or equipment. Um stored outside in in this district. Uh, that's the sole purpose of of that building. Then we have a relatively large. Um parking area and gravel, um gravel area, but that is to facilitate tractor trailers and large trucks with the. Low boy, boy trailers to be able to access the site.
Make that big move around.
Yeah, yeah, to be able to to pick up and drop off equipment that that'll be um moved through this site. Uh, we have, uh, we're proposing nine parking spaces uh with one ADA compliant parking space with a access aisle. Uh, he's, for the most part, uh, the owner is the the main employee there. He may have someone else there occasionally. And and a couple of employees, that's why we're only uh proposing nine spaces for for such large buildings, really no need. Uh for for more than that, it's not a retail, it's not a retail store. Don't have lots of lots of customers. This is kind of by appointment. Uh, very little walk-in business. We have uh an onsite septic system, an electric gate for site security, uh no other fencing besides the gate. Uh, we're proposing a waterfall feature in the front. And a storm infiltration basin kind of in the back corner. Of the property.
And the silo.
And keeping the silo, the silo is existing. Uh, we wanna keep that. Um, he wants to refurbish it, but he hasn't quite. Decided on the best paths for that. But it would be, you know, at some point painted in part of the landscape.
Okay, by showing the silo and saying it will remain. Uh, it has to remain unless you come back to the sport and desire to turn it down.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, there's no intention to take that down.
Okay, it's just.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, that's kind of the selling feature of that piece of property.
Okay, let me think. It does add to the agricultural. Uh, department that we have out there, yeah. Uh. I'll bring it to the board. I appreciate the landscaping when you have there and show. Do you own that land where you show you're gonna put those trees? Cause it shows the property.
Those are existing trees.
The green ones are exist.
Yeah, the the these trees here are existing. They're actually in the state right away, so we can't touch them even if we wanted to.
So you're gonna add any landscaping then?
Uh, so there's, there's uh the waterfall feature, landscaping around the silo. Uh, then there's landscaping in front of uh the two buildings and because we have butt up against a rural, what is it, agricultural residential.
Aggress, yep.
I've actually added uh trees along this back property along. As part of the buffer required.
Was that part of the plans you submitted today?
Those are, those are on the revised.
Okay, well, according to disadvantage, I didn't get to see that. I mean, we're. I think we can work around.
Yeah, I I do apologize. I I had some issues getting them printed and some personal issues that um kind of delayed me a little bit. I did get the comments from MRB last last Wednesday. I mean, I did my best to to address all their their comments and did revise plans and.
Yeah, I did see you respond and I just, you know, not having the plans is hard to confirm whether or not.
Well, if the board's comfortable, I think we can act on what we've seen. Uh, if it's mostly response MRBs, that's usually occurs after the.
Sure, I I will say there were, there were a lot of changes, but the grain, the 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 changes overall were minor in nature. You know, the the overall site, you know, the buildings, the pavement, the parking, the majority of the landscaping is exactly the same. There's some contour changes. Some note changes, some detail changes. Um. Nothing significant, you know, to the to the actual design.
Greg, can you talk about the um lighting at all, the clear lighting?
Yeah, we we did ask for a lighting plan to show photometric contours.
Okay.
Um, I'm, so he responded, I think that's on there.
Yeah, there was a lighting plan on there originally. Um, it came back from my. The person that did it for me was some unusual contouring.
Okay.
Um numbers. Um, that has been revised to be uh, you know, more standard foot candle requirements. Uh, I've added the cut sheet. Um. Page isn't set out.
What do you thought you got?
Uh, we more than I thought it would have.
Hey, that means you're getting a bargain.
Oh, bargain.
So, so there's uh, there's the photometrics. There's only lighting around the buildings. Uh, the foot candles have been changed to even, they they were strange numbers that they put on there.
Right.
He has asked for the cut sheet for the material, you know, uh lighting schedule.
Yeah, I know that it says uh lighting shall comply with uh section two twenty.
All lighting shall comply, it's right there in the.
Uh signage, are you gonna have signage?
So, uh, we do have a proposed location for a sign, but they are not applying for a a sign at this.
Okay, so that'll, you'll have a separate application for sign.
Okay, yeah, we were called that to separate application anyways.
It is, but as long as you show it on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be located um that show.
You know, the proposed.
You know.
It does, yeah, just some location, but they would be in a separate.
With those existing trees and and we have to use the existing curb cut, um existing trees kind of block.
Right.
Block most of where we would wanna put a sign as part of the waterfall featuring. And the other purpose of keeping the silo, they tell people. Where the site with the silo, then you know, you're gonna see the silo way before you can see anything else, we would never be able to do that.
So you did propose to display a vehicle, uh not a vehicle, but something, right? The planning board has to specifically approve that.
Uh, so.
Yeah, that was my question. If you can't have outside storage, I guess this would be considered. Well, advertising and storage, I, is that still in the works? Putting in a tractor or something?
Is it, um, yeah, so we.
Probably easier not to.
We got the landscaping plan with no, no vehicles, and then I did a proposed uh vehicle display. He would like to put one out by the pond. And then be able to have something under his his porch roof. Uh, most likely they would. I mean, he turns equipment over fast. I can't imagine anything staying very, very long.
Um, I'm not enamored with that. Again, it's it's a form of outside storage, uh and I just, you know, don't, and he's selling mostly refurbished equipment, right?
Yes, that that's what it is.
So you're not looking at a brand-new Bobcat sitting out there. You're looking at a refurbished piece of equipment sitting out. On the, on the roadway and. Okay, you're.
Well.
Your assistant, your bosses.
Yeah, I would like.
Not boss, maybe sort of.
She could probably address that issue better than I.
This would be a brand-new piece of equipment. These would be brand-new pieces.
And you're ma- naming.
My name is Jennifer Gettilero. I am with diverse.
She's the project manager. She's just doing everything.
Thank you. That's my new title, and I love it. Um, but this would be a new piece of equipment. Um, it would probably, most likely be brand spanking new from Bobcat. It's not a tractor. It would be uh skid steer, mini skid steer or something of that nature. Obviously, he's in business to sell equipment. But Brian's also had over twenty-five years of experiences as landscapers, so he's very committed to things looking nice and clean and it's not like it's. What we look at from that piece of property across the street where it's just firm equipment everywhere and it looks junky and gross. It would be something that has an aesthetic view of what he's selling.
Well, I I go back to the boat.
I go back to the.
Yeah.
After Lex, Maria.
And I know, yeah, uh, we were concerned that. You know, there that we we were okay with the boats being seen from the road, but up on the parking lot. I don't, I I think if. If that person, if that owner would have proposed a boat down by the road, uh we would not approve such a thing and I. I don't think we can approve it down by the road. Certainly, if you maybe wanna have something up on top of the hill.
And I think he would be okay with that as well. There's always room for negotiation.
Yeah.
Well, like, he was looking at putting, putting something under the porch.
Right.
Porch roof, so.
Of the main building.
Yeah, yeah.
This is.
They have a priority there.
Which is not extremely visible from the road either.
Here, so they'd be in front of the building, but under the porch roof.
Does that like a, does that have like a concrete?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's called. Yep.
And you have shrubs and bushes.
So it's not sitting on grass.
Yeah, shrubs and bushes in front of it.
There's a lot of trees right there, not looking down there.
Yeah, and there and there's not external.
Little ton.
Yeah.
There's a lot of landscaping.
There's a road that goes uh east to west there.
Yes. Yeah, hey, to be honest, under the porch is gonna be more for people already on the site than it's gonna be from people driving by. You're not. You're really not gonna see very much driving by it.
Sean, I would, I would, Chris, address having a piece of equipment sitting underneath the porch. Is that, is that considered outside storage?
It is.
It is. What about, you know, putting it away at night?
That's what exactly will happen, just.
You know, putting it away at night.
Into forest.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not storage, it's out.
I mean, if we think of other places along three thirty-two that do that.
Yeah.
I can think of one very visible one.
Hmm.
And his line of equipment is in high demand, so the level of security that he needs to take in order to protect the equipment. And again, having something else, you know, by the sign or under a porch would be moved at night into the indoor facility.
I mean, he probably rotated it too, probably over time, yes.
He, one hundred percent. And sometimes there are just like a display piece that he will get that's brand-new, but he's. And again, you don't know him, so, but he's, everything's clean, everything's. Spotless and that's just how he points his business.
Those, those bushes proposed in front of the uh the overhang, it's, they're probably.
They're all low.
Yeah, they're low profile, but probably from a half, two feet, eighteen, twenty-four inches. Okay, so so part of that piece of equipment may be blocked, it blocks, right? Hey, just pointing that out to you. And originally, didn't extend that all the way to the end of the building? If you sort of cut it off right at the kind, the the landscaping, that in terms of.
The the landscaping in the building. I I stopped it because one, that's where the septic tank comes out. The septic tank sits right at that corner. And two, it it, you know, the building steps back at that point, because that's actually the porch. So we got a sixteen-foot step back.
Okay.
At the end of the porch.
All right. Just like.
The new, the storage building is new.
Brand-new.
Newish. New, very newish. Do you have elevations for that?
Yes, they were.
Were they in the new plan?
They were, you should have had them the first time.
Yeah.
The first.
They did, I did email them to you today as well, so. Um, it's, again, it's very similar.
To the other building.
Uh, in danger.
Outside of old barns.
Yeah, it's it's pretty much the same with the exception of we're not putting the stone on the equipment building.
Right, and the windows would be on the roadside.
Yes, yeah, this would be facing. Trying to make it look.
That looks nice.
More than just, you know, your.
He doesn't want it, yeah.
The whole floor.
Right, right.
And if you're in a team with the silo, you know, we wanted everything kind of to feel like.
Farmy.
You know, a colline.
Well, that's a good word.
Silo farmy-ish.
Are the, are the nine parking places? Sean, are the nine parking places adequate?
Yes.
Usually we're worried about too many spaces, like just to make sure.
Yeah, we've talked a lot with them about this because they're not really, your buyers are mostly online. Some, often the equipment is taken to them. There's not a lot of people coming into the site to shop, so that should be more than enough.
There's no one coming into shopping. So when vocal comes in, they're coming in. They contacted us to say, hey, listen, I wanna come see this. They come and see this, they make an appointment with Brian, and he shows it to them. At most, there is maybe three cars there at one time.
It's, we were figuring three or four cars would probably be maximum. Um, but like nine there, because, you know, three to four doesn't feel like enough for, that's how I feel.
Does the pond service serve as any stormwater?
Uh, that's, that's an existing pond.
You see, you see it when you drive down. Oh, yeah, no, I know it's there. Uh, I wouldn't sure.
I mean, now.
Are we making it?
Yeah, I mean.
Better, are we making it?
Probably about a third of the site drains to that pond now. And then the other two thirds, um. The other two thirds are, you know, drains this way. But no, we're not proposing that to be part of the stormwater system. We're proposing an infiltration.
The banks of that pond, are they just like wetland vegetation?
It's more of a dug, it's more of a dug pond, where they help.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty low.
I don't, I, I really don't think it was a natural pond. I think it was manmade.
Yeah.
And it's just become, yeah.
It's not spring fit.
I, I don't believe so. It is listed on the.
It is a wetland.
Federal inventory as a freshwater pond.
Well, just don't wanna have it turn into a, uh, quite mark.
Will there be stored, storage of other implements tied to the equipment outside at all?
No, there, there won't be any outside storage of any materials or equipment. And I did add a note to the plan that, that does say that on the site plan, that there's no outside storage. Of materials or equipment, just so that it's, you know, officially on the plan.
In the design of the access back to three thirty-two, did it take into consideration the? Fact that we're gonna have potentially have slow moving vehicles coming out of there? Is there enough sign at site?
So you can only turn right out of the site, and right into the site. Uh, you have over fifteen hundred feet of visibility. Yeah, that's, you can see actually where that, that curve cut is actually probably in the best spot on that site, or that's probably why it's there. And we're not allowed, according to DOT, that's where it's gotta be.
I know our friends from Ontario County like to sit there and catch us coming down the hill every morning. They move it a pretty good clip.
Shame on you.
I said they try it.
Alrighty. I see they tighten up that front yard so they can't get in there.
Yeah, they can't. Are you gonna put a gate there?
Well, unfortunately, the gate is way.
It's back, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's way, way good. I'm sure he would be, he would consider moving it forward some if that was under the board, but. I don't think you'd be able to move it far enough forward to keep a.
No.
Officer from sitting in there.
Well, that's better security for you.
They can sit there as long as they want. I don't care. I'm not gonna mess with our friends with badges.
Okay, uh, looking through some of the agencies that reviewed this ECB had some concerns. Um, acknowledging the, the, could, what never was farmed, right? I mean, it's not being farmed at all.
It's not being farmed now, you know, some, someday in the past.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, not recently.
It hasn't been farmed for quite a while.
I think the, uh, ag committee pointed that out in their review. Uh, the ag committee felt there's no loss of valuable farmland currently not being farmed. Uh, the ECB brought up a question about the, uh, I guess, uh, basis species, the burning bush is being proposed. As one of your. That's one of your proposed landscaping or something that's on the property. It was in the, they proposed.
Oh, so take that out of.
We can either make that as condition. Because there's no reference ECB comments. Uh, they talked about the landscape buffer in the back, which I think. You have pointed out will be provided. MRB, uh, there was a reference about the archeological. Reference in the, uh, in the part one.
I've reached out to, to the office.
That's to be experienced.
Yeah, sometimes they're really quick and sometimes they leave a little desire, I guess.
And I think I see Saul today in your correspondence that you have submitted a concept or sketch to, to Naidon.
Yes, uh, the, the concept plan and the first, um, phase one of the term thirty-three, I think I put. Twenty-two on the, on the letter, but it is the firm third, third. Has been submitted.
Alright, so you'll, you'll need that.
I was like, what's that one?
So you'll need that approval before we can sign the plan, so. Uh, we're, you know, make sure you stay on them. Uh, board have anything else, concerns?
Hey, everyone, Amanda's joined. Um, I joined at about six fifty-three. I don't have any. Um, concerns or questions on this one, but just wanted to note that I'm here.
Hey, welcome. Thanks for joining us. You're working with DOH, right? Part of the health on the subject?
Yeah, out of the watershed, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be.
Uh, they referred us back to the town.
I spent, uh, very much time with them, and they were very clear with me that this has nothing to do with them. I was told the last meeting.
The standard system, right?
Uh, I proposed Elgin mats just because, uh, you know, trying to take up disturbed less area.
Okay.
Um, and, and everything wants to flow towards a pond, so I have to do that on her pond, but, yeah, I mean, it, it hurts, um.
And the gentleman from, uh, the, the quarter for the health department contacted Chris, himself.
So, yeah, the, the subject is, um, parts of silo. Uh, with the Elgin mats, it only requires two, two lines. The other two lines are required one hundred percent future expansion. Uh, the design was in the, in the previous submission for all of that.
Yeah, I think Colin actually reviewed that, so.
So who, who signs off on the subject?
Chris.
It's not, it's not Tyler.
Right.
And it's not DOH.
It would be Chris.
I spoke to Chris and he said he has the plan and he would.
Okay, oh, I didn't know Chris could sign off on.
I didn't either until this project.
Well, you normally do it on the watershed.
Yeah, it's always watershed.
So the old days of that, all the.
Yeah, that's why he's on the watershed, it's important health.
It's all phosphorus stuff you have in here too.
Yeah.
It has all the phosphorus information here.
There was, um. That's in the resolution.
Yeah, the resolution.
Yep.
All of those notes, I believe, are.
So, do we take them out? Cause it's not in the watershed.
I don't know, I mean, it's not.
It's, I don't, it's not gonna hurt.
I don't think we're, we came up with that.
It's a paddle for broke, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's be a good story to.
I don't, I don't see this being an issue anymore.
Right.
Yeah, it is in the, uh, county ag district. It's in the strategic farmland, and it's in the paddle. Paddle for, for anyway, so. And it is, uh, a gate, you know, part of the gateway to the town, and that's why we're probably a little more, uh. Cautious in reviewing it than what a standard industrial property or more something of this nature is located somewhere else, so. We wanna make sure that does the town proud as people are driving in.
And that's, that's why he has proposed, you know, the, the fancier looking building with a lot of stonework and, and the porch and timber framing.
Yeah, do you have the elevation of the, uh, the, the eagle western? Yeah, there you go, okay. So that's.
It is nice, dude.
Is it a facade stone sort of, or is it real stone?
It'll be a facade stone, but, but, you know, in today's facade, you really can't tell. It's not like the old ones that were plastic. Um, these, you know, they're, they're nice.
That's a metal roof?
Yes, yep. And, uh, open doors will be wood grain finish. And he's, he really wants it to, you know, he wants it to be a showcase.
Alrighty, let's, uh, anybody in the audience wants to speak? You didn't pick anybody up on the outside, bro? Okay, so, uh, let's move on, um. Again, it's unlisted. This is unlisted because. It's a safe, like, I, I don't mind doing it, I mean, it's just, see my better view.
If he puts the vehicles away every night, would it be considered storage, outside storage at that point?
That's what I'm saying.
I think you need to set a limit.
Right.
If, I don't think it would be any more than, it would be any, I don't think it would be anywhere between one and three, if that.
Well, the thing is, I mean, you could, you can get, you get excavators, right? Skid steers, so they could be fairly big.
The excavators are big. Those I don't think he'd put down by the road and. And I actually just, when I was talking about sign, signage. Incorporating something like that on his existing sign, if and when we decide what that's going to be, which. Which obviously in advertising purposes would give viewing for what he does. But underneath the porch, those would have to be put away.
So when a delivery of equipment occurs, I think you had said it, here, see, it goes right into the building?
Yeah, cause that's when he inspects it, he thinks.
So it doesn't sit outside? Uh, we just, I mean, Chris is just gonna have to, you know, it doesn't keep start, such that, such accumulate outside.
I don't think you'll have any problems with them. He's very, he, he, he will, I don't know, whatever rules are put forward, but.
If, if it does accumulate, Chris, you, you know, Chris.
Oh, I do.
He'll be on you. So, uh, you have any other concerns on this?
No, I, I, I think for a business sense, I would want to have something like that outside, as long as. I don't consider it storage if you put it away at night. Like your car, you, you're leaving your car during the day, it's outside, and just bring it in, put it back out. I don't see that. Storage issue where we will have RV storage and storage lots outside all the time, things like that, that's different.
I was.
Yeah, I was just reading it. Well, this is the display of goods for sale. So it's really not, it's, we're talking about two different things here. Storage, which they're gonna have inside the building. But the display of goods is what's, what needs specific approval by the board.
So if we approve both locations, they can display under the cupboard and then.
And then you would have to, I think you should set a parameter if you want it to allow it on three thirty-two.
I don't, I don't want everyone three thirty-two, I think.
So just under the building?
Under, under the building, we're okay, yeah. And there is a distinction between equipment being delivered and people, and equipment being set out for sale. Or even advertising what they are. How about, just, just say no equipment be left out overnight?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. No problem? Okay, that would be, uh, the condition of the.
Some condition.
Okay, uh, we're, we're, we were getting ready to act on seeker, right? Okay, uh, we'll make a motion that we consider. A seeker resolution for a mechanic engineer representing first light equipment, uh, nineteen forty-seven state route three thirty-two. In the CC zoning district, uh, stating that, uh. This is considered an unlisted action by the planning board that we have reviewed part one. The application, application submitted by the applicant, and we are willing to, uh. Think action and move on parts two and three. One second.
One second.
Scott, Scott, okay, I made a motion. Scott made a second one favor. Okay, moving on to the site plan approval.
I have number eight is utilized native species only for the landscaping plant. I have number nine, equipment goods displayed only under covered, only under the covered building. No uncovered display will be able to be permitted.
Only during work hours. Okay, and we.
I had time, another one for, uh, questions of approving the subject.
Can we just say the town?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, and we're basing our action on plans last revised. May seventh, cause we haven't had a chance to look at the, the plan, so. Uh, since most of those revisions are addressing the MRB comments, that's one of the conditions that. Those, uh, issues be addressed, and it sounds like you gotta jump on that, so. Assuming that MRB is, uh, okay with how they were taking care of.
You want us to leave?
Yeah, May seven.
Yeah, cause we haven't. So, uh, it's based, our, our, our decision is based on the May seventh, which we all saw and reviewed, so let's, uh, go with that. And so we make motion, or I'll make a motion if no one has. To approve a single state site plan approval. For the aforementioned, uh, property at, uh, nineteen forty-seven state route three thirty-two. Uh, subject to ten conditions. I don't think we have to have read any further. So everybody understand the conditions. If they do, I'll take a second, I'll second it. Okay, I made a motion, Mark made a second. To approve a single state site plan approval for the discussion, roll favor. Motion carries. Okay, folks, thanks for your patience and coming out and speaking.
Starting soon? You start building the conditions? Alright, no problem.
Can I get your name, please?
The Jason McCormick.
It's been patented by a vice.
Well, he was the Senate county engineer.
The Senate county engineer.
The Senate county engineer, yep.
Alright, I think we're through the applications. Let's move on to. Our approval of the minutes from our June fourteenth meeting. Any additions, corrections? If not, I'll take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Made by Bob, seconded by Scott. Roll favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Nice job, John, as usual. That was a tough meeting, yeah. No money to hand out tonight?
No money tonight, next, next meeting.
We hold on our money? Uh, referrals from town board. Do you wanna mention the ag protection overlay that you sent out?
Yeah, I sent it out today, which I know.
Mentioned it.
Right, so please, yeah, so what it is, is a way to protect or. I guess heightened awareness of. Prime ag lands in a certain, I wish I had it, had the map in front of me, um.
It's a red shed.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to grab it here. I'll grab it back.
Well, she'll explain. Okay, we're not gonna discuss it much tonight. I think just jumping in here, our meeting on the twelfth of July. Looks to be, uh, rather late, and I was hoping to a little bit, uh, talk about some of the project updates. Uh, solar specifically. And, uh, Amanda, Scott, anything you have to share, and hopefully I'll, I'll have an update on the, uh. Site design criteria, and where we stand with that. New Lance's.
Lance is chugging away at it.
And is, you know, whenever he gets the time, um. And we can also talk about this in more detail at that meeting.
So, can I speak now?
Sure.
Okay, so the areas. Yeah.
That's fine.
The areas, so these are prime, alright, so let me back up. We have a strategic farmland protection area, which is everything, sorry about that. Within this red giant red line, um, and we have a plan that dictates that. There are certain areas that have prime soils or the majority of prime soils which are green. And the, the, the basis of this. Proposal that you have in front of you is to put any parcel that's seven acres and above that. Is proposing to extend public water and sewer would have to go to the. That is proposing to extend public water and sewer would have to go to the town board for approval of that.
And this is within a specific.
Yeah, that, it's basically from here to here, this, this chunk right here.
So. So it's not the entire area, but it's.
This chunk.
It's a portion of it.
Yep.
That is, that I think is probably most ripe for potential development.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I think, you know, your biggest pressure is gonna come right out of farming, some, with a sewer.
With a sewer, right, there's nothing here, there's nothing here.
There's really nothing over there.
So you could have a, a smaller subdivision with septic, but anytime, you know, any, it's just for food, some. Expansion of sewer and water places that wouldn't be ideal.
The sewer runs up, um, Brickyard to the airport, right?
Yep.
That cuts off and then.
Cuts off, so this is, there's nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good area.
We have to do quite an extension to get into that.
It would be substantial, yeah, so that's what the, the, sorry.
And I guess.
That's what that proposing is about.
Town probably wouldn't take it by itself to do. Extend the sewer water, but the thought was a developer might be willing in that area to spend at his cost. Uh, doing it, and this would protect that, well, it would require that the town board would have to.
There would be extra oversight, yeah.
Yeah, that's really, yeah. So, it's greeted, uh, we'll talk about it, uh, July twelfth meeting.
Yeah, if we could, if we could, uh, if there is discussion, have that on, on the twelfth. And then send any recommendations to the town board.
Okay, ZBA, uh, nothing? Nothing. Nothing to Chris. Uh, comprehensive plan, I, are you getting the board, I said that hopefully on the twelfth, we could maybe go over some of the projects that we're working on. Get updates and see where we, where we wanna go with them, it's now half the year's over.
I think it's important for us to, to make some strategic and quick recommendations on solar. I think we should really.
But that's a maxi war, strategic and quick recommendations on solar. Whoa.
Yep.
There is no such thing.
Well, it's, uh, there's some, very, very much increased pressure.
Well, we could say something's gotta be done. Anyway, yeah, Bob's done a lot of work on it, I think.
Yes, I think Bob's.
We have a good, uh, good starting point and maybe if, you know, we could send that along or wants to get the endorsement of the, the board.
Board, yeah, they were, you, you reviewed it last time, right, or you got it, like?
Yeah, we got hard copies, so. So there were two, the, there's the battery.
Battery storage.
Storage, and then there's a revision of the soul.
Right, so the battery storage would be an addition, additional town code under large solar. And then the rest of it will lies amendments and changes, updating it to the new, uh, type solars they're calling it, versus large small. All that stuff, the difference is how to make it safer and, uh, less obtrusive.
Well, if you could walk us through that on.
Yep, well.
Okay, then, then, let's see, uh, other business, uh, training hours. We handed those out.
We handed those out, Mark, we know you're speed super speeded, you can work with Ally.
When you hand those out, Shawna?
Tonight.
Tonight, you want one?
Yeah.
You see it?
Can you read it?
I'm lacking half an hour, right?
Oh, my gosh, yep, no, I see you as more than that, an hour and a half.
Hour and a half, alright, but we've got, and I wanted to ask you about that, Shawna, I asked you earlier, the September twenty eighth training.
In Canadagua?
Yep. That would, we'll take care of that, and do that, the extra hours carry over from what I remember, yeah.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, Mark, you're gonna be, well, you're new, so you have twelve, yeah.
I gotta run away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured you had more than four and a half, based on that email you sent out. Okay, so, uh, take a look at that, thank you, uh, Shawna and Ally for, uh, putting that together and just, you know, keep track of it. We can only earn what we know we're earning, so I guess.
We trust you all to tell us the truth.
Alright, then we have a meeting on July twenty sixth, which, uh, has a little more activity, uh, I won't read the applications. Anything new and different, uh. We should know about.
I will, I will propose.
Nope, okay.
What drives the removal of projects, I see a lot of them, we get them and then they go away.
Well, they go away because they don't have enough information for you.
Withdrawal, so many more.
They withdraw, zoning, like for, it's shotlands.
Yeah.
It's just been delayed because their variance is pending another month. Wiser was one.
Batiste, what happened?
Batiste has. Few more months to remove their asphalt, they withdrew, remember?
Yeah, okay.
Said they would comply.
And, uh, Westbrook?
Westbrook will be coming back and, and all of that, and actually, that's an update today, it'll probably be on the July twenty sixth agenda.
Twenty sixth, not the twelfth.
No.
The, uh.
No.
Local law draft for the private roads?
Yeah, that should pass. On the eighteen of July.
Did you review that? Did we see that?
I didn't see it, man.
Did you see that? Did you not get that? We were talking about internally the referrals to the boards, yeah.
I don't think it came there. They set a hearing, right?
They set a public hearing, I. We can still get it to you on time to review and comment on the twelfth, it's the eighteen.
Eighteenth of July.
Why don't we, why don't we do that for the twelfth?
With that, uh.
We'll add that to this ag and the subdivision.
It's, uh, it's an attempt to try to resolve this issue with private, but it's, uh, it's pretty substantive, I mean. Three or more lots.
Three or more lots.
You gotta be on a polar grid.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Yes.
It's, that's gonna have an impact on what's coming forward.
Moving forward.
It's a significant change. Very.
So, uh, we'll talk about that on the twelfth.
Is it three or more or more than three?
It's.
It's.
More than three.
More than.
Three or, three or less.
It's three or less, it's four, yeah, yeah, so it's four lot.
That's why they came up with three.
We like to make it complicated.
Well, actually, it makes it less complicated. Because the, you know, you can do a minor subdivision with three lots.
So that anything kicks it in. So you'll have to upgrade the road to public road standard.
Ooh, even in pre-existing.
If you had a pre, absolutely, that, say you had a fourth lot that comes on, you have to upgrade that road.
Really?
Lots are really expensive. Well, on a Linda.
That's crazy, yeah.
Yeah, on a Linda.
On a Linda's gonna. Technically, yes, but I was thinking. Yeah, yeah, that would have to be a public street.
There's a lot of roads like that.
That'd be, that'd be.
Oh, you.
My, my driving.
David's landing. Right?
Hillcrest, Hillcrest. That's a private road.
So you need your, you jam.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Never would have flown.
So that means no more subdivision.
That's it, but that's the appropriate.
Or is it?
That's the appropriate, no more application, though, that, hopefully it should never have been a practice.
It would still have to be a subdivision to a. How did that happen?
Cause four, yeah. No, that's, you're, you're going back into like, I think that subdivision was done in the early nineties. Alright, so let's, let's close out for me. We can go bits, uh, okay, anything else, anything from the MRB, Greg, thanks for sitting in.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, uh, trying to do my best Lance impression, so.
Talked way, he talks a lot more than you do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a big fan of brevity.
She's crazy, so.
Uh, this was one of our sure to be. Alright, Amanda, how you doing? Okay, uh.
Good, good, thanks for.
You didn't, you didn't wave with your left arm yet to me, you know, not quite.
Uh, I can kinda hang outside of my sling a little bit more, but I'm still slinging it when I'm in motion, so. Um, hopefully we'll see you guys in person in July, once I get more comfortable driving by myself, my car's a stick shift, so that's. That's off the table for a long time, but I'll have my husband's truck, so, um, uh, but appreciate you guys putting up with me.
Call Uber. Scott, how you feeling, alright?
Much better.
Okay, good, alright, well, thanks for everyone sitting in, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn, Amanda, you can do that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn us tonight at seven twenty.
I'll second.
Amen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Night.